We're going to call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise, I've asked Supervisor Gould to do this morning's invocation. Supervisor Watson, will you please lead us in the pledge?
If you'll join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today for this day, Lord, and we thank you for this county, Lord. We thank you for our great nation that you've given us that's founded on your will, Lord. We ask that you watch over our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, Lord, and I pray especially for an injury-free day for our workers today, Lord. Bring them home safely to the loving arms of their family. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to call for an executive session to be held on December 2, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Official business, we were briefed, as it says, on the agenda, and I believe no action will be taken.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any committee and/or legislative reports? Supervisor Johnson?
Just that we continue to work with the White House staff on the uranium mining.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. CSA Director Craig Sullivan, President Russell McLeod, President-elect Rudy Malero, and I met with the state senator, President Karen Phan, to discuss the 2020 county legislative priorities, as well as the FY 2021 county budget priorities. This was last week. Senator Phan shared some of her current challenges, as well as things we can expect during our upcoming legislative session. And then the preliminary Senate budget is well underway, according to President Phan, and she said the expectation that she has is that the budget would be voted on and completed during the week bill transition from their originating chamber to the opposite chamber. She cautioned us that it's her intent to move things quickly this year, and she strongly suggested that we get our bills out there as soon as possible. So then, the following day, on Thursday, as the outgoing chairman of the CSA Medium Caucus, I was proud to introduce the director of ADWR, Mr. Tom Bukowski, and he gave us a informally water summary presentation and took questions from us. And the members of the Medium Caucus were Mojave County, Cochise, Coconino, Yavapai, and Yuma Counties. And then later that same morning, the CSA Board of Directors met and elected the six executive committee officials to lead the organization during the upcoming year. Santa Cruz County Supervisor Rudy Malero was elected to serve as president. Maricopa County Supervisor Steve Galero will serve as president-elect, and of course, I'm deeply honored to be serving as your first vice president for this incredible organization. Navajo County stepped up with Jason Whiting as the second vice president. Pinell County Supervisor Todd House, third vice president. And pretty much that concludes what happened in Phoenix over last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Thursday, I had a phone meeting with the members of Crisco, the Colorado River, whatever the heck the rest of the acronym stands for. It's a Water Committee for Colorado River. Also attended the MVIDD meeting the week before that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, again, on water issues. I'll be traveling tomorrow to testify before the Arizona Department of Water Resources against the transfer of fourth priority water to the town of Queen Creek and offer them other solutions to solve their water problems. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be attending the public hearing about that issue in Bullhead and speaking against it, using the resolutions that we passed here and passed at CSA to back that up, and I'm looking forward to that. We did have an EBT Employee Benefit Trust meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, week and a half ago, and usually what we do is we have Erin Collins and members of the HR Department to come here and explain. You know, there were some issues that I think the employees had brought to us, I wish they'd brought earlier, so we can do this and not have to wait for a meeting. There are things that can be rectified if you go and talk to the HR Department, or if you don't believe you're getting any resolution, you can come talk to me. But I think we've solved them and are going to make restitution to those employees that had been wronged in their reimbursement. And so, Mike, can we put on for the next meeting? Or it's, yeah, this will be the first meeting in December presentation.
Madam Chairman, I'll certainly try to schedule that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it for me. Anything else?
Madam Chairman, I guess since everybody announced the meetings that they will be attending, I'll also be attending the water meetings in Bullhead City, as well as Yuma.
Very good. Okay. Do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, I also plan on attending at least the Bullhead City, the Phoenix, and I'm sorry, and the Parker meeting.
Search tomorrow.
And I was at the MVIDD meeting, and that was somewhat uneventful. I wish there was more to report on, but there isn't. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. And there are no meeting minutes to approve today. I will open the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. There's nobody signed up. Is there anybody who wishes to speak about something that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, I will close the call to public. Onto the consent agenda, items five to 33 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bishop?
No, I have nothing.
Supervisor Watson?
None. None this morning.
How about you, Supervisor Gould?
None today.
Okay. I have one, and that's item 12.
We almost got away with it.
I know, we almost got away. I just have a couple of quick questions.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda items minus item 12.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we have item 12, which is a public health establishing three additional grant funded community health specialist one positions for the purpose of meeting the amended grant deliverables for the Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Prevention Program and a revised budget. Hi.
Good morning.
Okay, so, you know, I read through that, and it was a lot of stuff, all right? So we're getting, we're getting three, we're getting four new. You have one now, right? And so, the contract is being amended, or are you going for the grant? Is the grant already amended?
EDHS amended the grant so that it's extended for another three years, and then we're adding three positions.
You're adding three positions. So you've had two already?
Yes.
Okay. So I was looking through it. First of all, three, there's going to be three of these positions in Kingman, one in Lake Havasu, one in Bullhead. You know, as the district that only gets one, I would hope that in the future, more of it is spread around. You know, that's just something that we deal with all the time, that Kingman gets more for whatever reason. I think maybe some of this has to do with the jail, and I understand that. But as I was looking about around the, like, what the position is, which again is everything but the kitchen sink, the salaries of these people, there are five, it was about $201,000, so it's about $40,000 a person. And so they're relatively, it's kind of an entry-level position. So one of the things that concerned me is that one of the, in the job description, it said these people will go into providers' offices to educate them about opioid guidelines and things like that. Is that true?
This particular program, it started out what was called the PMP, which is the prescription database, where everybody has to log in what they're prescribing to patients. So that's how this grant originally started, was getting everybody on board for that. So we have to continue that as a deliverable, getting any new providers into the database, and making sure that they know that they have to follow through on logging.
You know, again, there's nothing that doctors like more than having someone from the government come in and, you know, tell them what they have to do. I mean, they all have lawyers, it's so, you know, they kind of know already. So, you know, out of all the things that the kitchen, everything but the kitchen sink, you know, if you have to take one off, I would, you know, because they hate it. Okay, I'm just going to tell you, they hate it.
And that one's just maintaining what we have done. What this work plan is moving forward is to do more of community outreach, do education in the schools, create a curriculum.
Okay, that's my next point. So, one of my, my, now I'm going to say objections, but concerns, is that the public health department doesn't reach out, because this is kind of a world I found myself in, in Bullhead City, so I kind of know what's going on there. But when you guys do this stuff, you don't kind of reach out to who's doing what, because some of this is total duplication of things that grants that have already been gotten by nonprofit groups. So I'm just asking that before you do anything, that you reach out to the nonprofits that are already doing stuff, find out what they're doing, and that we don't duplicate services.
Absolutely.
You know, there's so much that you can do in what your, you know, what your job description says, and I have, that's one of my pet peeves, is that, all the duplication for these grants, because there's so many grants, you know, money that falls from the sky, as we have. So if we're going to get it, let's at least use it wisely. So what I'm asking is, after this whole thing is approved and you put together your plan, if you can bring it back in front of the board, so that we can, we can at least know what's going on in our different districts.
Absolutely.
Is that okay? All right. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing, Agenda Item 34, brought to us by Public Works. Discussion and possible action to hear the protests and objections on the resolution of intention for the Malibu Road Improvement District project. Mojave County Public Works staff was, has notified the property owners by mail of the public hearing. The Board of Directors shall hear and pass upon the protests and objections, and its decision shall be final and conclusive. The Board of Directors may modify the extent of the proposed assessment district in which a new resolution of intention shall be passed containing a description of the modified assessment district. We do have several people signed up, and then I believe Supervisor Bishop would like to speak to it.
Yes.
Okay. First up is Mr. Consolato, James Consolato.
Dear Supervisors, Madam Chairman, on the matter present before the board, today in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes 48917, 918, and 919, I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors, acting as the Improvement District Board of Directors, rule and adjudicate on the matter by the letter of the law, not by the emotion of opinions about the law or about any manipulation of the law or emotion. I'm going to read the statute, it's up there. Statute 48917, item eight clearly states, "The owner of a majority of the frontage of the property fronting on the area of the improvement, or when the costs of the improvement has been made chargeable upon a district, the owners of a majority of the acreage of property contained within the limits of the assessment district may make a written protest within 20 days after the date of the mailing of the notice of the passage of the resolution." After carefully reading the Arizona Revised Statutes, the language focuses and hinges upon the simple majority of property owners within the assessment district at crucial and changing time periods, namely, at the time of the establishment of the district and now in the official designated protest period of the project. In both cases, a majority number of 38 out of 74 parcels prevails in sufficiency determination. In the instant case of the Malibu Road Improvement District, 33 official protests that was received, that were received, does not constitute the required 38 majority. In addition, as a mitigating consideration, it should be noted that many of the 33 official protests were at least partially predicated on an aggressive abundance of written and spoken misinformation, half-truth scare tactics, and false sensationalism. At the time of the establishment of the district, established in truth and community goodwill, the only determining factor in question was, did a majority of 38 petitions get signed? The language of the statute on the official protest, this protest, by the way, established in mob anger, fear, defamation, dissension, and gross misinformation, supports the same singular question, did a majority of 38 signed protest petitions during the defined time period? To this latter question, the answer is no. The law leaves no mitigation of that number. The decision is mathematically simple and does not sustain a sufficient protest. On behalf of the prevailing majority number of 38, as defined in the language of the statute, I respectfully ask that you, the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Directors, do not sustain the protest, and that the Malibu Improvement District move forward in the next steps of the project development process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Consolato. Next up, Rebecca Whipke.
Excuse me? You have nothing to say? Okay, but can you go on the record that you're opposed? Because that's what you wrote. Okay.
Stanley Lundstrom, and he speaks in favor.
My name is Stanley Lundstrom. I am one of the originators, along with Jim Consolato, informing the district here, the Road Improvement District, Malibu Road Improvement District. It took us about three or four months to go ahead and get all the signatures and get the approval by the majority of the people. And as Jim has stated, I think that's the law, and that should be certainly considered. The protesters have been aggressively intimidating some of the people who are there in order to get a protest hearing. They've called me and Jim liars and other names, and accuse us of fraudulent actions, which is totally not so. I feel, I don't live in the area anymore. I'm not a resident. I moved. And it's been approximately close to two years now that we've been on to this. I moved for reasons that this was going to take a long time, which it has, obviously, and no longer reside there. But I feel that it is still very beneficial to the people there in the community, and seeing as how we got the majority, I think that should certainly be considered. There's a lot of health benefits, and this is, and the road condition, this has all been looked at in the past, and I won't go into detail on that, obviously. But I feel that the estimated cost, which originally was extremely low and miscalculated by the engineering department or the county itself, and has been revised now to a different price range, that seems to be the main objective of the protesters, from what I see in here. And they are aggressively intimidating many of the people to protest against this because of that. I understand that the county has been trying to drop those costs somewhat by doing some of the work in-house rather than farming it out. I don't know what the end result would be of that, but possibly, we may have a lower cost estimate. And obviously, the key word is estimate, and that's what it was from the beginning. So I feel that the benefits that will be derived by the community, the beneficial benefits, extremely outweigh the estimated costs of the Malibu Road Improvement District.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, but you no longer live there, correct?
What's that?
You no longer live on the address that you put down.
No, but I was one of the...
I understand that, but the person who now, or people who now own that property, have they been, have they been asked what their opinion is?
When I sold the property to them, I notified them of that, because obviously, I would have to do that.
Okay. But I just want on the record that you no longer live at that address.
Yeah. But also, it's been, since you mentioned that, some of the leaders of the protests have been mentioning that the cost was not $4,000 per parcel.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
But $40,000 per parcel.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis.
Chairman Angus, I have a question for the speaker. Mr.? I know you were on the originating petition gathering process.
Yes, I was actually the first person to talk to you, as a matter of fact, in regards to this.
That's correct. So I have a question. I'm looking at the map, the assessment map, and on lots 12 and 13, 25 and 26, their frontage is on Maconico Road, which is already paved. Are these four properties opposed to this now? Do you know? The ones that front Maconico?
The ones that front Maconico?
Yes. The ones that are already on a paved street. Are they part of the protest against this?
Well, that's what I understand.
Okay.
That they are on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if they should be on it, to tell you the truth. I don't know why.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next up, this might answer some of your questions. Our next speaker is Bradley Morrison, and he lives on Maconico. And he's speaking opposed, he said, in favor of protest opposed to project.
Hello, my name is Bradley Morrison. My address is 3284 West Maconico Road, Golden Valley, and I am a parcel owner in the district. The Malibu Road Improvement District was formed with a two-parcel majority out of 74 total parcels, based on an $1,165 total cost estimate per parcel. At last month's board meeting on October 7th regarding the vote on the resolution of intention, district engineer Mr. Les Henry was asked by Supervisor Bishop to explain the dollar amount going from $1,200 to $4,000. His answer was, and I quote, "This gets back to my comment a few minutes ago about the danger of giving quick, off-the-top-of-your-head estimates. Essentially, I was asked the question of what does it cost to chip seal a dirt road?" And his answer was, "Around $3.50 a square yard." And that figure got locked into stone, and people ran with it." End of quote. It is clear from this statement that the organizers of the district did not use due diligence in coming up with an accurate cost estimate during the formation of the district. The $1,165 figure was the big selling point from the beginning. We were told $10 a month or $120 a year for 10 years, and we could have a hard-surface road. It was even mentioned that by cutting back on cigarettes or other discretionary items, everyone could easily afford the cost. We were also told that this total cost was enough to bring the road up to county standards and would then be adopted and maintained by the county. I don't believe that was ever possible with this estimate. I realize that there were disclaimers in the original petition that stated that the cost figure was only an estimate, but is the only figure that parcel owners had to base our decision on. And this $1,165 total cost estimate was repeated again and again during the sales effort to farm this district. No one mentioned that the actual cost could be possibly three and a half times the estimate as it is now. We had to trust that the organizers were giving us an accurate figure. There has been talk recently of maybe getting that figure reduced even by possibly $1,000. But that would still put the cost about three times the original estimate used to farm the district, and I don't believe the parcel owners in the district would approve that. I understand there were 33 protest letters given to the clerk of the board during the protest period, and at least 32 of these were notarized. Kelly Stickrath confirmed that 16 of these protest letters were from parcel owners that had signed the original petition to farm the district and have now changed their minds. So a large majority now disapproves of this project going forward. So I believe the burden of proof should go back to the organizers to prove that they have their majority.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
And I thank you for your time. And if I could, just a second to thank Kelly Stickrath for giving me information anytime I needed it. She was very helpful, very, very objective, and gave me anything I asked, even though it might have been contrary to her position.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Kelly.
Okay. Ed Minor, speaking in favor.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Ed Minor. I live at 3411 West Malibu Road. I'm for the improvement at a reasonable cost. But about a month ago, well, about mid-October, I had a neighbor approach me on my property and start talking about false information he was giving me. He said it was going to cost about $40,000 for each person to go for this road here. And he also said that he had printed out a bunch of forms for everybody to protest if we wanted to. And all I had to do was to meet at a certain place on a following weekend, and there would be a notary there to notarize our signature. We didn't have to just sign the forms, and they would take care of and turn them in for us. He kept, he was pretty, it would cost $6 for the notary. Anyway, he was pretty aggressive, and he kept getting worse and worse. We finally got into an argument, and it still got worse, so I finally had to have him leave my property. And he said he was really upset, cussing and everything else. He said he was going to get, to talk to everybody to try to kill this project. He said he's had enough, he didn't want anything else to do with it, and the best that he could do was go around talking to everybody about it. Anyway, that's all, that's all I have. That's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. John Van England, who's speaking in opposition today.
My name's John Van England. I live at 3410 West Malibu Road. I'm the gentleman this gentleman just spoke about. That conversation leaves a lot to be desired in what was relayed here by that person. But my comments are, speaking is one whom Stan Lungrum first approached to help in establishing the Improvement District. I suggested he also speak with Jim Consolato and get him on board for his wordsmith skills and familiarity with circumventing the government, county government procedure. I, on the other hand, would go door-to-door promoting the petition to establish Improvement District at initial cost of $1,165 per parcel owner. I spoke with and sat in many a home of the families over a three-week period. I know I was responsible for at least 25 out of the 38 votes needed to establish the district. Many owners made it perfectly clear that $1,165 Many owners made it perfectly clear that $1,165 plus engineering incidentals and administrative fees that I assumed would be approximately 30% was doable. The majority of those also needed to pay for their portion over a 10-year period payment plan. The ones who opposed, most could not afford it. The remainder did not want a paved road. Period. I relayed this information to Stan and Jim. I told them if, for whatever reason, the cost were to increase to $1,800 to $2,000 per parcel owner, I would not support moving forward, knowing what I know after speaking with the parcel owners. They both agreed. Today, we are at 300% over the initial proposed cost that seems perfectly fine for those who can afford it regardless of the increases and are capable of paying it in full. The majority of others will have their properties leaned and assessed. With biannual interest and principal payments, they will have to pay 37.5% above and aboard the $4,408 for a total of $6,064 due to the added 1,656% interest over that 10-year period. This is based on bonds sold at 8% interest, and that's all I can go on. So that's what I used as a figure to figure these, to come to this, this cost. I ask the Board to please keep in mind the opposing majority today are the people who can least afford it and will be paying the most for this project to satisfy the now minority. This is totally unacceptable. It is a financial burden to myself and to the majority who now oppose this project. I request the Board dissolve this Improvement District and end this. Thank you. Also, keep in mind, those who oppose stand at 53 parcel owners out of the 74. That is over 2/3 opposing at this point in time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Wayne Bancroft, speaking in opposition.
Good morning, Board. I, I just bought the house on 3068 West Malibu Road, the first week in August, purchased the house there. It wasn't until last month that I even heard about this project that was going to happen. And of course, I already heard about the initial cost and then the end cost. And of course, me, like most people would, they put as much down on the mortgage as possible. And with me moving from Washington State back to, you know, down here and everything, well, you know, that seemed to me to be a lot of money for a little, you know, for my parcel to be chip sealed. And my wife, being the way she is, she went online, and between Washington, Oregon, Nevada, California, and Arizona, a chip seal over a, you know, a dirt road has a life, you know, an average life expectancy of seven to 10 years, depending on, of course, weather conditions, how the winters are, how the summers are, and all that. What my question would be is, who's going to maintain it? And when it does need to be re-chip sealed, who does that? And what will be the cost of it to us owners when it has to be done again? So, and the road, I think, is just fine. And I'm happy, and yep, neighborhood's great and all that. I'm glad to be here, but I definitely oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Bedora, speaking in opposition.
Hello. So anyways, nobody really knew about the meeting on October the 7th, you know, it was kind of hidden, which before Jim used to keep everybody on the Walnut Creek Estate, you know, what's going on with the road stuff. But, so, good thing I was here, and I heard it from Bradley. And then, so we got the letters, and everybody had the 20 days to do the protest. I will say that I was told by Jim, just let it run its course. If we would have let it run its course, if he would have, if we have not done that, the people of this protest on this day would have never been here. What I did, and a handful of people, we got people together for the protest. We went door-to-door, and 25 notarized at my house, five already were notarized that was handed to me. I don't know the full count of how many people actually came down here and gave their papers. At that time, 12 of the prior yeses for this, 12 of them said no. After talking to Brad Morrison, found out he talked to Kelly, and we have 16 opposed that used to be yeses. So I think you can kind of figure that one out, that I don't want it, and we don't, we need it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no one else signed up? Is there anyone who wants to speak to Agenda Item 34? He didn't, you didn't speak yet. Okay, come on down.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. A small problem was, my name is Gerald Lewis. I did, I did sign up in the back to speak. I'm not sure if my name made it to your list.
Sorry.
Well, that's quite all right. Thank you. I live at 2955 West Malibu Road, and I've been there, you know, for several years now. Jim and Stan approached me and asked if I was interested in the Malibu Improvement. And the first thing off the top of my head was, you know, improve, the value of my house, you know, the breathing, the dust. I have to roll my window up on my truck as I'm driving by because the car's coming at me. I mean, I don't want it to come, you know, straight into the vehicle. I'm a, I was a commissioned notary, and I notarized every single one of the people that enthusiastically approved and wanted this improvement done. We went door-to-door, talked to them, and they seemed to all agree. Let's see, on my notes here. I'm not sure of my account of how many times that I notarized. I know 38 at the time plus people agreed. You know, doing the math, I believe I notarized personally, what, over 70 documents. My fees were free to the cause because I agreed with it, and I liked the idea of it. Well, with all that being said, as you know, I do agree with the program, and I would like to thank Jim and Dan for their leadership in this. And that's all I have to say today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I recognize that there's a lot of comments out there, and I'd like to know if Steve Lukowski could, could come to the podium and give us what the facts are, you know, how many, do we? Yeah, just, Steve, if you could just give us the facts as they are today so that I have direction on, on how to go forward, that would be helpful.
Certainly, and good morning, members of the Board, Madam Chairperson. I wish to convey some of the information that we have received, and this is during the protest period, the 20-day protest period. Please note that there are 74 parcels subject to assessment. This comprises the overall Improvement District, which also represents the parcels to be benefited by the three roads to be improved, Malibu Road, as well as short portions of Tony Joe and Huntington. At the time of the petition to incur expense, 39 petitions were submitted. This reached a 51% minimum threshold, and so forth, that's why the Improvement District went forward. Of those 39 petitions, original petitions, our office received 16 protests. Now, of the overall 74 petitions, parcels subject to assessment, there were 33 total protests filed. And that is, again, during the 20-day protest period. These are protests that our office received through the clerk of the board. Please note that Meconico Road, which is the only hard-surface road that bisects Walnut Creek presently, it runs from Open Highway to Apache Road. Meconico Road was hard-surfaced under the County Soil Stabilization Program in 2004, was actually authorized by a board resolution in 2004. It entailed the same exact approach as the district engineers proposing for Malibu, Tony Joe, and Huntington. It involves stabilization through an acrylic polymer and then capped with a weatherproofing chip seal. That road has been in existence now for 15 years, maintained by the county, and I personally was just out driving the Walnut Creek roads on Saturday, and I continue to find Meconico Road in very satisfactory condition. If the Board were to move forward and this hard-surfacing of the three contemplated roads were to occur, Mojave County would assume maintenance responsibility for the paved roads as part of accepting the overall improvement, or the hard-surface roads, I should say. So again, using the Meconico Road as an example, we fully believe that any hard-surfacing in accordance with the district engineer's plans and specifications would certainly carry a reasonable service life. As it relates to the overall engineer's estimate, I must profess that the Public Works Department, their lone participation up to this point and in the future will be under the district engineer capacity. Yes, Public Works, through the Board's appointment of Les Henley as district engineer, has carried out the engineering at a total not to exceed cost of $7,500. This cost will be burdened by the Improvement District regardless of the outcome of this matter. But as it relates to the overall estimate, the district engineer offered a cost estimate of $326,000, I'm using round numbers now. Of that, approximately $227,000 represents the overall improvement, leaving about $100,000, I'm sorry, about $90,000 remaining for contingency, as well as the cost for bond counsel and a financial advisor, basically bonding for the overall improvement. And bonding would be required if the district didn't receive, under its cash demand period, complete payment of the, of the amount due. Basically, what's happened would be, once bids, actual bids are obtained, there would be a cash demand period prior to notice proceed for the contractor to proceed with the work. Essentially, the district has to account for all of the funding and have the funding in place to be able to pay for the, pay the contractors. So there is a cash demand period where residents would have the opportunity to pay upfront, but if it were to go to bonding, those, you know, estimated at $90,000, inclusive of a 15% contingency front for scenes, you know, would be additional costs realized. So I want to just go back ever so briefly to the estimate of $227,000 for the work. This would just purely represent what the district engineer estimates for the soil stabilization through acrylic polymer or similar, as well as the chip seal. Now, the county has undertaken this approach numerous times, and actually, as of recent, within the past three years, we have realized a cost of about 35% less than this. But please understand that the district will be bidding this project as a standalone project, well, through a public, you know, through the, you know, common public procurement process that we see with county projects. When the county has undertaken such work, we have packaged this with other project proposals, other work that, you know, when you bid more work and contractors know there's an economy of scale, you know, the bid prices typically come out a little less. And I will also leave off with the fact that the engineer does not want to bid a little bit. So the actual assessment, while it's represented here under an engineer's estimate, is going to be reflecting of the actual construction bids that are received when we do go for, you know, the solicitation process, which is predicated on the outcome of this action. So with that, I'm going to stop there. I think I covered most, all the points. I'm certainly open to any and all questions the Board may have.
Okay, Mr. Lukowski, if, if we were to remove Toy Joe and Huntington, that would eliminate some of the folks that are protesting, I believe.
I did have a-
What are your thoughts on that? Could we go, go forward if we remove those two roads and, and reflect a modification on this, this resolution? Or maybe that's a question for our attorney.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Bishop, I would certainly defer to the county attorney for an opinion in terms of the intricacies of removing them from a legal standpoint, but I can comment, and I did put up a diagram here that staff put together this morning. Currently, there are only two parcels that front both Tony Joe, and then two parcels fronting Huntington that actually just front that side road and do not front Meconico. So what we did find during the protest period is that one of the two parcels fronting, exclusively fronting Tony Joe, and actually having access on Tony Joe as well, they actually have a dual access, one on Meconico and one on Tony Joe, but they have a driveway on Tony Joe. One of the two parcels did file a protest. One of the two parcels that only border Huntington and do not border Malibu also filed protest. There are four other parcels that front Tony Joe as well as Huntington, and as you will see there, with the, the check marks represent those that filed protests. We have received protests off of, from those, but those are parcels that front Malibu as well, which, you know, they, that's their primary access. So removing those streets is just a nominal amount of, you know, roadway to be improved. We're only speaking in the sections between Malibu and Meconico. So it would lessen the overall engineering expense, I'm sorry, improvement expense by likely a nominal amount. And again, going off the economy of scale, it really would be simply a nominal amount.
Yes, Stu, I, I agree with, with that, but I think it would also show some good faith on, on the part of this Board to, to understand that those, those four parcels are-
There'd be four of them.
Are, are paying into an assessment that they're really not getting value to, and-
They do have driveways on, on the side road, but they also have driveways, I believe, on the Meconico. I know that Tony Joe, they have driveways. It's kind of that dual driveway, that curved linear driveway that they have access on both roads.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Lukowski, if we were to eliminate those two parcels that we just spoke of, would that create a problem for accepting Malibu Road into the maintenance program because they would not be connected to another paved road?
Oh, Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, in terms of those four parcels that have access already on Meconico, they would have access to Meconico, the paved road. But they would be, you know, part of, they would be removed with the side tree removal.
No, my point is, when we look at the application to be accepted into the county road maintenance program, it says that these roads have to be connected to an existing maintained road.
That would be Open Highway.
Are they then connected, would they still be, would Malibu Road still be connected to another paved county road? to another paved county road?
Yes. If we look at the extension of Malibu, it actually does connect to Open Highway. So they would have that connection. That's a very good question, though.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions? I have a question. You know, I heard a lot of numbers. We had people saying the numbers are still the same, and then we had a gentleman come up here and said that 16 of them were yeses and now they're no's. So because it, I know this is the protest period, but because the numbers have changed now with this, it's changed, can we, is it possible or legal to do another vote? I mean, right now, I don't feel extremely confident because things have changed so much since we first voted on this.
Madam Chair, I would defer to Attorney Esplin on that.
What's your question in terms of what do you want to vote on? I think that's the determinant factor.
To be in or out of the district.
Because the question initially was whether to form a district.
Right.
And that, and something to point out with that was, it was not a straight yes/no vote. It was just collect a number of people to get above that 50% threshold, and that's what they did. So we don't know technically what those 49% were, right? They could have been no votes, they could have been people that just didn't get contacted or whatever. So it's a little bit challenging to say, well, when they voted and now people are voting against it, well, we don't know that because the first vote to create the district was 51%, the people who were in favor of doing this, and it wasn't yes or no.
Well, you've proved my point, is that it's very confusing and we don't really know, you know, this is a lot of money to be assessing on people. So, you know, it's gone on a long time, the numbers have changed. Is there anything within what the board can do to go out and do a final, you know, vote again and find out for sure, since it was so close the first time?
Yeah, the district's created, so it wouldn't be a vote to create the district.
Okay.
You either create a district or you dissolve the district, and it's the board that actually does the dissolution of a district. So that's kind of a different equation. If you were to, if, what the board could do today is, the board can say, no, we are not going to move forward with this particular project, and they could vote it down. Or the vote could, the board can say, no, we want to modify it. If we want to modify it like we're proposing here, then they would have to do a new resolution of intention. They'd have to submit it out, we'd have, the board would have to vote on the new resolution of intention, and then there'd be another protest period, and then you have to go that way. There's not going to be another vote to the people in terms of whether there should be a, whether there should be a district, whether there should be a project. At this point, it's now here.
So this, if we do modify it, as Supervisor Bishop is talking about, it still will go out again to another public hearing.
What it'll do, you will restart the process. What'll happen is, they would, you would vote to modify it, at which point, the staff would draft a new resolution of intention. The resolution of intention would be brought back to this board for the board's vote. Board would then vote presumably in favor of the modified resolution of intention, at which point, they would then, they would then notify the members of the district, saying you have now a 20-day protest period. I think it's 20 days, I have to double-check that. But that protest period, during that protest period, if anybody protests, they'll be brought back, and we'll be back here at the exact same point we are here today.
And the numbers will change, obviously. The amounts will change if we do the modification.
Who knows?
Who knows?
They would probably change, but like Director Lekowski said, it'd be minimal. But I am prepared to make a motion, and we'll see where that goes. So Chairman Angus, I move to modify the extent of the proposed assessment district by removing Tony Joe and Huntington Drive from the district and directing staff to prepare a new resolution of intention reflecting this modification, which resolution shall be brought back to the Board of Directors at a future board meeting for board approval.
Yes, Mike.
And before we get into that motion, I would just add, there is one other possibility to, the board could, I'm assuming, the members of the district could do a new petition to incur. That would be moving all the way back and be a brand-new project. They could do a new petition to incur, but that's also an option as well, you know.
You still want to stick with your motion?
Yes.
Did you want to say something, Mike?
Madam Chairman, the option that would actually answer your question, what's the head count? You know, is it above, I believe, the last option that our attorney Esplin has discussed is the only option that would get you to where you were discussing wanting to be. And because if you do a new resolution of intention for a modification, you're still going to go through the protest period, and you won't know an exact count of all those in favor or all those that are opposed. And when you do a new petition to incur, you know, you're actually getting a petition number regarding that particular issue. And you can do it, they could submit a new petition to incur for the exact same project or a modification thereof. And I think that's what Ryan was getting at.
Right, I understand that.
And if he did that, you'd be moving even, you'd be moving even further back to starting over.
Yeah, but going back to the drawing board.
Correct.
Chairman Angus, my reason for going this direction was because I think a lot of the protest is being brought on by people that don't see how they are going to, to, how they're going to benefit from paving the little side streets that they don't even use and they don't intend to use. So I'm thinking that going this direction will take some of that dissension away from the neighborhood and a lot of this misinformation that has been put out there has been clarified by Mr. Lekowski. And I think when it comes back again to the protest period of, if those folks are still wanting to protest, then maybe, maybe that would be the time to dissolve this assessment district. But I think this would be a chance to save it.
Right, okay. And in that new resolution, it'll have numbers and, you know, new numbers?
The modified resolution intention will look like the current one, with the exception of it'll remove the two streets that was stated in Supervisor Bishop's motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
I move a substitute motion.
Go right ahead.
Madam Chairman, I move that we direct the district to circulate a new petition to incur expenses.
Okay, now, first we have to-
The last option that Ryan discussed, where it would go back to the property owners with the price that it is now, and they could vote yea or nay on that.
Right.
Madam Chairman.
Or sign to the petition or not sign the petition.
Madam Chairman, the improvement districts are by the people. They're not by the county. The county actually can facilitate, and I believe that's what Supervisor Gould is asking us to do, is to actually draft something so, to hand to the people, but it would be up to the people whether they wanted to circulate or not. We can't direct the district to perform that activity, if you understand what I'm saying. It would be the district's people that would undertake that activity to circulate the petition outside of county direction, because the county actually has, other than forming and approving, the county doesn't form the district, the people form, doesn't petition for the district, the people are the ones that petition for the district, if that makes sense. So you'd be directing county staff to prepare the appropriate documents to provide to the district to allow them to circulate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so it's up to-
The substitute motion takes precedence.
Is that true?
Here's the, I'm going to sidestep that question, but going back to the substitute motion, in order for that substitute motion to go forward, we have to, the board has to make a decision on this resolution of intention. If this, if this question is still out there, and then you say, well, let's do a petition to incur, that's not going to make sense. Procedurally, the resolution of intention's got to die and then do a new petition to incur. Because if it's already out, if this resolution intention's already here, then they can move forward with the resolution intention. If they don't go forward, then you can go forward with the petition to incur.
So Madam Chairman, Attorney Esplin, then to do what I suggested to do, we would have to defeat the current petition?
I think you do. I think you do. You've got to have that resolution intention resolved. We've got to, we've got to have an answer on that one. Either we go forward with it or we don't. If they go forward, then your question's moot. If they deny it, then your motion can move forward, and they could do a petition to incur. Because that petition to incur brings it all the way back to the start.
Since my motion to, my substitute motion was not seconded, I then withdraw my substitute motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question, Mr. Lekowski.
All right.
Mr. Lekowski, this has been agendized, it's been sent out for 20-day objections. As of today with this board item, is it ready for approval? What I'm asking is, were there enough objections so that it can't go forward, or were there not enough objections where it can go forward?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, during the protest period, the district received 33 total protests out of 74 parcels subject to assessment. That is less than 50%. And of the 33 that did protest, 16 were original parcel owners that signed the petitions to incur expense, and there were 39 total petitions to incur expense that were signed and filed. So that's also less than 50%.
Right, but you're saying that's 33 out of 72 opposed to it.
That's the official count.
So it's a majority, as of the votes that we count, to go ahead with it today with everybody in it.
That's impressive.
And if we do, if for some reason we do a modification, those people still have incurred expenses on to-date costs, in case we cut them out, they still have money to pay.
Correct. Regardless of the outcome of this proceeding, the district itself is encumbered for up to $7,500 in engineering costs.
That's my, they formed a petition, they've got the petition, they haven't got the, and there's always going to be people objecting. Heck, I objected when we did ours, but it gets up to the board to make the decision whether we're going ahead or not.
Supervisor Bishop, your motion, is that the motion you want to put forward that's been seconded?
Well, Supervisor Johnson brought up a good point. $7,500 has been incurred, so every one of these property owners is going to be assessed that amount, including those that own property on Huntington and Toy Joe. So now I'm in a quandary. Do I withdraw my motion to modify this and go with just approval? Or do I try to appease the citizens out there and go with the modified? And I think I'll stick with my original motion and go with the modified because that shows good faith, we're listening to the people. And most of the protest, I believe, were coming from a couple property owners that don't see the value based on them living on those little short streets.
Okay, so you're just keeping your original motion and it has been seconded? And just one more clarification, excuse me, lawyer, is that there will be another protest period. And after this gets done, when the new resolution, there'll be another, it's not, it doesn't go back to the beginning, but there's another period that people who are against can speak.
That's correct. So if this, if Supervisor Bishop's motion goes through, a new resolution of intention will be drafted, it'll be brought back to the board, assuming the board approves it. I don't know if they will or not, but if the board approves it, then there'll be a protest period.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Item 35, we're on the regular agenda now. Discussion possible action, approve changes to personnel policies and procedures about paid time-off policy. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you want to speak?
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 36, discussion possible action, approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, Section 3.7 civic duty leave policy.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item 37, discussion possible action, approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, Section 5.2 workplace violence policy.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda 38, discussion possible action to improve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-130 to accept the paved roads within Mystic Canyon for the purpose of inclusion into Mojave County's regular paved road maintenance system.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item 39, acknowledge receipt of and refer to Pollo Warsa petition to Mojave County Board Supervisor requesting that West Volcanic Drive from South Jade Road to South Topaz Road in the South Golden Valley area be accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
That's three to two. This comes from Buster Johnson. Agenda item 40, discussion possible action, direct staff to come back to the board within 30 days regarding a cost analysis for an incinerator capable of burning retired flags to be used as the county landfill and a policy on how the county will accept retired flags. I do have somebody signed up, if they're still here, Mr. Lee, Larry Lee.
Madam Chairman, Angus, and board members, my name is Larry O. Lee, and we reside at 835 Desert View Drive in Lake Havasu City. I speak in favor of the motion to investigate the retired flag incineration. As an associate member of the Lake Havasu City Elks Lodge, 2399, and on behalf of the various veterans organizations in Lake Havasu, we need assistance with flag retirement program. With over 6,000 veterans residing in Lake Havasu, we have a lot of flags flying, and of course, they don't last very long, the wind and the sun. In 2018, together, the various veterans organizations retired over 3,000 flags. And the Lake Havasu Fire Marshal has had an issue. They had two volunteer paid firemen from Lake Havasu City and a fire truck at the facility at Campbell Ranch. And the firemen were the ones that placed the packages of flags in the, what is like a teepee burner, except it's off of the back of a cement truck. And it burns well, but the composition of flags has changed in the last several years. Nylon does not burn as well as cotton. And the Fire Marshal said that he won't allow the firepeople to be there again and has halted the retirement ceremony for 2019. In the last ceremony we had, there's over 200 members of the Marines, the VFW, the VFW Auxiliary, American Legion Auxiliary, American Legion, young Marines that all participated in the program. And it was reverently done, and that's the way it should continue to be. We support Supervisor Johnson's proposal to examine and introduce further information. Now, if we took a look at the county as a whole, there'd be probably over 5,000 flags or more that should reverently be disposed of each year. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had no idea at the time when this was brought to me that it was such a problem, and I'm guessing that it's a county-wide problem, and I'm guessing that there's some areas probably were still burning, say, on somebody's ranch or something like that, which will probably be shut down at some point. This is more than likely a federal issue. They're the ones that make the requirements, but the only ways of disposing of the flag properly with the dignity that the flag requires are through burning or burial. Obviously, burial would take up too much space. Burning, as Mr. O'Leary said, is not possible in the Lake Havasu area. Some people have brought up crematoriums. They can't do it because of the same reason that they have. It covers the bricks, which makes the crematorium malfunction. So I thought that it was something we could look at at our landfill, because I think it's going to be a bigger and bigger problem. Mr. O'Leary was saying they'd get in about 100 flags a month in, down in Lake Havasu, just in their facility. That's not counting the VFW and American Legion and the Boy Scouts and everybody else that does it. And I'm really afraid that as time goes by, we're going to see people not doing the dignified way of getting rid of the flag just because it's become a problem. So I thought it was something maybe the county was willing to take on if we thought that was a responsibility of ours. Brought to the board.
Okay, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Discussion?
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I have a number of VFW lodges and American Legions in the remote communities, and having this flag ceremony is a big part of their organization, and they look forward to doing these. So my question is, would these ceremonies then be held at our county landfills?
So my question is, would these ceremonies then be held at our county landfills? Would we have a designated area where the, where the military groups could go and do their ceremony?
Madam Chair, what I envision, it could happen that way, but still, the Elks and Lake Havasu, or the VFW, or the American Legion, or the Marine Corps League, any of those, could still have their ceremony and then give it to the county for disposal. And if we wanted, I mean, we could have a small ceremony at the disposal time, but I figured that would be more of a, you know, like right now, I think we have 3,000 in Lake Havasu, so if they went and did their ceremony, then we could do it later on, like they'd just pass them on to us for the proper handling of the flags. So they could still do their ceremonies in those areas and then just give us the flags for the disposal.
Yes.
If I could, Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
You could also send, the representatives of the organization could come and view the actual disposal of the flags also, which then they could report back to their group that they had viewed that. Thank you.
My comment was only the fact that in many of those ceremonies, it's a very solemn ceremony, and requires the performance of the flag being burned with the ceremony. As I recall, this is the retirement of the flag, proper procedure on that and proper protocol. What we may want to look at is a countywide effort to solve this problem, because it occurs everywhere. So I certainly support your endeavor to do this. I think maybe we ought to try to figure out a way to solve it countywide.
Well, I'm assuming that the agenda item is just to have, you know, administration come back with different ideas. I'm sure when you do your study, you'll find a lot of new information that we don't know. So again, this is just, this item is just to refer to administration to come back.
And Madam Chair, I'd make a motion then to direct staff to come back to the board, hopefully within a 30-day period regarding a cost analysis, analysis of an incinerator capable of burning retired flags to be used at the county landfill or appropriate location and a policy on how the county will accept retired flags. For the use of the whole county, that was my whole intention.
And I'll support, second motion.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 41, discussion possible action to approve the Mojave County Board of Supervisors 2020 meeting calendar. Yes?
Madam Chair, in the backup, there were actually two calendars provided. Thought process from staff on that was NACO is the first week of March, I believe. We weren't sure if two or three of you were planning on attending that, as it's in Washington, DC. Figuring if that was the case, it would be better to cancel that meeting now so that staff and other people could plan versus last minute.
Okay.
So we need a decision on which calendar.
Okay, anyone want to say anything?
You didn't submit a once-a-month meeting calendar?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, no, I did not.
Thank you.
Okay, we've cleared that up. All right, so I need a motion.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion that we accept the calendar that takes into account the NACO conference.
I'll second the motion.
Our motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 42, discussion possible action, elected chairman and vice chairman of Mojave County Board of Supervisors to be effective January 1, 2020, to serve in those positions for the 2020 calendar year. And I just want to say how fast times flew this year, and thank you very much for allowing me to be the chairman this year. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Bishop as the chairman of the Board of Supervisors to be effective January 1, 2020, to serve throughout the 2020 calendar year.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and...
Chairman Angus, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint as vice chairman Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, I'll second that. So we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 43, discussion possible action to accept the reports on special events from the deputy county attorney and development services, and accept development services' proposed strategy for addressing the concerns expressed by the board, the attorney, and development services.
Madam Chair, I'd put this on the agenda, reviewed it, I'm sure everybody else has. I think they did an excellent job. Attorney Esplin pointed out that we have laws in effect that the sheriff can go out and enforce, unless the board wants to make more laws. I would just make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, any other discussion?
Chairman?
Yes.
If I can just add a couple on top of what Supervisor Johnson said. One thing, too, that we, that County Manager and I talked about that didn't get to that backup, was that in addition to the laws, there is a provision in the zoning laws that allow for, to use preliminary injunctions that could be used. So if something's happening, let's say that there's going to be an event, and they've not got their permit, and they're disobeying the law, they can, you can come, the staff can come to the county attorney's office, we can seek an injunction to stop the action as well. And the statute specifically says that we can do that.
Why didn't that make it into the backup?
I just, it was a discussion that we had separate from, we didn't, we didn't discuss it with the development services.
Okay, any discussion on that one?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
So the procedure for that would be someone comes to the county attorney's office, the county attorney's office then goes to a judge, and the judge would then issue that?
Yeah, and so you have a little bit more teeth behind it. Now you have a judge who said, hey, I've reviewed this, and I find that this, that this entity, this, this organization needs to get a permit, and they have not got it, they are disobeying the law, so I am issuing an order prohibiting this from moving forward. And then the sheriff's department has more teeth behind it, saying, hey, this is an order directly from a judge that says this shall not go forward. And those injunctions can be, can be different in terms of sometimes, sometimes they're ex parte, where it's just the county asking. Most of the time, it's not. You usually don't see those, because you want to have both sides. So if both sides can have their day in court, both sides make their argument, and then the judge says, I'm granting this injunction. Now, the other side has had that opportunity in court to make their day and make their argument. So, so it's a little bit, it's an additional mechanism that the county could use.
So if it was the day before the event, it would then be ex parte?
It depends, but that would be an example where you would usually try to seek an ex parte, because it's so fast and it's happening so quickly that you, that if you don't get this now, there will be harm to us. Irreparable harm, that's kind of an important part to any injunction, is, is there going to be irreparable harm if we do not issue this injunction now?
Sure.
So that would be something they would, they would factor in. But I, obviously, I never know until the, till the case is presented.
Sure, thank you.
Chairman Angus, I have a question of the attorney. Are we going to have clear definitions of what a large assembly of people means when it comes to these special event requests?
I think that was, that was one of the recommendations, is that we define that. That was probably the most important term in this, is to define what is large assemblage of people. And that would be for the board to decide what that is. Is it 100, 250? The board would decide that, what that would, what that threshold would be.
Okay, anyone else? So we have a motion, worded as the original item. And did we have a second? I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Last item from Supervisor Watson, discussion possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-138 opposing the permanent transfer of any Colorado River water rights allocations designated to GSC Farms LLC, a Delaware limited liability company in La Paz County, Arizona, to the town of Queen Creek or any other entity in central Arizona, and direct the clerk of the board to send a copy of this resolution to the mayor and council of the town of Queens Creek, Arizona, our federal and state legislators, the governor of Arizona, the commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation, the director of the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and the statutory agent of GSC Farm LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
It's my pleasure to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and we will be bringing that up at our future meetings. And with that, meeting adjourned.